Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
It's here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer or moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, add a quick notice of this meeting as provided in the following manner. The meeting notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Star Ledger, on September 27th, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are in file with the city clerk. We are on now to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any members of the public who would like to be heard? Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue. I have six questions about the ordinance that we're discussing, and then one general question at the end. At the last meeting, we discussed over and over again about how this particular ordinance does not pertain to the pool clubs, or the private pool, or the public pool, and has absolutely nothing to do with that. So I would like to see the first two sentences of item... Packet Page 11. I printed it off the Internet this morning, so I'm assuming you've got Packet Page 11 the way I do?
You do?
No, no, no. If you have 11, doesn't she need to... You need to go get that copy.
No, no, no. Packet Page.
Oh, please.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, sorry.
Everybody has 11.
Okay.
We have 11.
I would request that the first two sentences on Page 11, where it's... References of beach clubs be struck from this particular ordinance.
Okay, so this is why I'm saying... So I am at where you're at, but I am not on Packet Page 11.
Have you taken one from there, Pam?
Right, and I'm saying she's here. She's at Item 1, Revised Boardwalk Language, 3.2, Open Space. You're on 3.2, Open Space Recreation Community Facilities, right Pam?
No.
Kathleen just gave me a copy from over there. It is Packet Page 14.
Okay. Now we're on the same page.
Page 14.
This?
What, the ordinance? You don't have 14.
I have...
No, this is Exhibit A.
Exhibit A.
Yes.
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A is Page 14.
Packet Page 1, 3.2, Open Spaces.
Right.
It says, "Change existing language below," and I'm suggesting that we strike the first two sentences because that has to do with the beach club, and we know this has absolutely nothing to do with the beach clubs.
Right. It's existing.
Also, there's a discrepancy, again, on Page... Packet Page 15, which describes the parking solution, which appears to be okay, but it also appears to be a permanent solution. And in the "whereas" is up front, unless it's been fixed between my version and this version, it says it's interim.
Okay, I'm going to give you another minute since we went back and forth the packages. And then the three minutes is up. But again, these are all questions you can ask during the second reading.
Okay, it looks like it's the one on the table has been corrected since the one on the...
Okay.
The one that was on the Internet. Because the one on the table says "permanent," so we're all agreed that this parking solution described is a permanent solution then. And you also added the description of what those spare spots would be. So that's okay. On Packet Page 11, now, in the reference to the jetty rock which you were adding, it was unclear when we discussed this the other night where that jetty rock was going, so the council suggested that some verbiage be added that said the council would have a say in the final design of where that jetty rock is supposed to go. I understand there's some new information on that, maybe you received some this afternoon about where that jetty rock is going, but it is in one of the diagrams, and it's going as close to Lock Harbor as can be, and it is in the design. So I don't know if you feel that you need to change that verbiage any longer.
I don't feel like I need to change the verbiage now that I understand where the jetty rock's going. I think there was ample confusion on where these jetty rocks were going.
I concur. On Packet Page 12, and now... Packet Page 15, the off-site parking reference, that first word "new" was added in one of the iterations, and I was wondering what the implications of that word "new" are. Does it mean new as of the date of this amendment, or is anything that's currently being considered not considered new construction, new redevelopment projects? I'm thinking specifically of the pool clubs, which are under discussion right now, so would they be considered new?
Your last question because we're way past the three minutes.
I'm sorry?
Your last question because this is the three-minute public portion. This is not only ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's why I said I'd give you an extra minute because we were back and forth.
I'm sorry. Do you want me to wait, or do...
Okay, no problem. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Seeing nobody, motion to close? Okay, well, you have to get up to the microphone.
I find you twice the time, that's good, right?
No.
Me, only four on a D.O. Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I have no idea why I'm here. I'm interested in Asbury, you all know that, but I'll tell you the truth, I can't figure out what you're doing, week after week, month after month. You can't hear half the stuff. The public is disenfranchised, nobody's here, and yet it just keeps going on and on. You show up at one meeting and all of a sudden, somebody from the beach club is at that meeting, and you say, "Well, why are they here in this meeting? I thought it was in that meeting." So what I think is, all the...
Keep on going, Ernest.
Okay. What I think is that that's part of the plan. In other words, to me, this whole thing got rolled out after the election, and then the position of the mayor and the council was, and the city manager, "We didn't know anything about..." The boardwalk's gone. When did that happen? Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? You didn't know the boardwalk was coming out? Please. And then I go to another meeting and they're saying, "Well, we'll do the parking garages, but we want the meandering boardwalk now." But that wasn't part of the thing where you worked out with the $8 million to put the boardwalk back. But now it's back on the table. And then you sit here, and I don't know, like, who could figure this out? Anybody? Really? So what I've decided to do is just keep coming and express what I consider concerned citizen like watchdog for like, "What are you doing?" Because nobody knows what you're doing. All I know is nobody likes it. I mean, I'm everywhere in town, I sit, I eat, I do my right. Nobody likes what's going on, but nobody can figure out how to stop it. It's like a train wreck going down the train. Every single thing, everything on every corner, it's like, when did that happen? You know? When did they approve four stories above there? No parking. When did that happen? Nobody knows. And then we find out, oh, there's going to be a new garage, right where the flagpole is. Why put it there? Why not put like 30 stories where the rain park is and really get some parking? Who wants something blocking the front view? It doesn't... Who comes up with all these ideas? I'm not looking for an answer. I'm only... Actually, I'm talking to the public, who hopefully is watching this on AP-TV, because wherever I go, the general consensus is, this city's out of control. It's got no cohesive government, the planning board is autonomous from the zoning, the zoning's from the city engineer, and everybody comes together in some little charade to try and please the developers. And the rest of us get stuck with no parking, higher taxes, crime corruption, crime bars at clubs, hotels that we're not allowed in, beach clubs that we can't afford. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to close? Motion closed? All in favor?
Okay, Ernest, I'm going to correct you on a couple of things.
Hold on. But I wish you wouldn't do that unless you let me respond.
I'm not going to let you respond. That's why I closed the meeting.
You don't want to leave.
Okay.
I don't like what you said.
Good, well, TV land will love it.
What happened?
TV land, who you're preaching to according to you, they'll love it.
All right, have a ball. That's the only way you're going to win out, is when you can keep me quiet.
I'm not trying to keep you quiet, except if you keep it up, I may have you removed, so your time is up. So I'm going to correct you on a couple of things that you might have been mistaken about.
Well, maybe you'll send those same two police officers through.
Ernest, now I will not... Yes, I will respond because you're doing the public a disservice. Your statement as far as the position of the garage is totally wrong. Your keep-on ranting at the planning board meeting and here that the meandering boardwalk is back is wrong. At the planning board meeting, it was perfectly explained to you that it's been changed even the language, which I believe is now curvler, and it starts at the end of the old boardwalk and goes to the fisherman's lot. So there is no boardwalk as you portray it to be in public. You're wrong again, sir. And I guess you didn't go to Long Branch, but have a safe trip. And now, we... Michael, do you want to... We have a slight snafu that Michael is going to explain, and then we're going to take about a 10-minute recess because, to make it fairer to the people, because there's a couple new handouts that Pam mentioned that got posted around 2:00 today, and we realized the entire public may... I've seen them. They're very short. I can read them in 10 minutes. Anybody can read them in 10 minutes. So we're going to take a 10-minute break, just so everybody can get it. Michael will explain it, and then you can go get a copy, then we'll take a recess to give you enough time to digest them and ask any questions when we open up the hearing for the reading of the second ordinance, or the second reading.
Second reading on the ordinance. Continuation.
Okay, Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. There's... On the first page in the third "whereas," the March 2018 date is actually a June 2018 date. There's going to be proposed amended language. The language that should be stricken is allowing developers of residential units to provide off-street parking on an interim basis while permanent parking structures are under construction. It should be changed to allowing developers of residential units to provide off-site parking and a permanent parking structure. There is a clarification. If you look at the clarification of the paragraph that starts clarifying that Block 145, Lot 1, that's actually Lot 2. And then on the "now therefore be ordained," the proposed amendment dated August is actually October, September 2019. That's the original date from the initial hearing. So those changes should be just read into the record, and the ordinance amended on the floor. Thank you.
Move to recess.
Okay, we're gonna... I'll make a motion to recess to 6:30.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Take a short break until 6:30. We're on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2019-318, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, amending the infrastructure component report for the waterfront redevelopment area.
Right. Does she have to close Packet?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I have a motion? Move it. Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2019-319, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, adopting a second amendment to the amended and reinstated redevelopment and land disposition agreement by and between the City of Asbury Park and Asbury Partners LLC. Do I have a motion?
Could I suggest that we take that after the adoption of the third amendment to the plan? Because this agreement...
Can you speak, Jeff?
Sure. I am the special counsel of the city. And my suggestion is that the resolution to amend the redevelopment agreement follow the adoption of the plan, because the plan has to be adopted first before you can amend the agreement. So it's just a question of the order of adoption.
Whatever the lawyers say is the proper thing to do, we're going to do. So you two figure it out and tell us what to do.
Okay.
It's appropriate to hold it. So had there been a motion on this?
Yeah.
Motion to adopt the plan.
Well, had there been a motion yet on the resolution number 319?
No.
No.
So then we'll just defer that until after the second reading on the ordinance.
Okay. So what do we do, Fred? Are we doing...
So, Melody, why don't you read the title of the ordinance that's up for second reading and the continued public hearing?
Okay, it is Ordinance 2019-38, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the adoption of an amendment to the waterfront redevelopment plan.
And as Mr. Capabianco had indicated, there will be a need for the council to formally amend that ordinance to effectuate the four revisions that he put on the record before we took the break. Mr. Capabianco reviewed all four of those changes before we took the break, so there would need to be a motion to amend the ordinance to incorporate those four revisions as already stated on the record, and a second, and a vote to amend the ordinance accordingly. And presuming that that vote is taken and approved, then you would reopen the public hearing on the ordinance as amended.
Move it.
A motion to amend?
Correct. Yep.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance amended. Now, do I have a motion to open the public... reopen the public hearing on 2019-38?
As amended.
As amended. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue. I apologize for jumping the gun before. So we're excited to get this wrapped up. So, on Packet Page 14, the two leading sentences referencing the beach clubs. Since this ordinance has nothing to do with the beach clubs and they're handled elsewhere in the waterfront redevelopment plan, I would like to see those two sentences struck, if that's possible. On Packet Page 15, the first sentence has... In one of the iterations along the way, the word "new" was added to that, and I was wondering what the implications of "new" was.
Should we be answering these... I'm looking at the professional stance of them. Should we be answering these as she's asking, and why not? I mean, because, yeah, just put... So why was the word "new" put in?
Do you want me to answer the first question first?
Okay, let's go to the first question.
The first question is part of Section 3.2, which is a 2013 of the plan. A new private beach club will be developed on the boardwalk. That is existing language and cannot be taken out.
Can I ask you to explain that further? This is an amendment.
It's not an amendment to the entire plan, it's part of this aspect. If that language is removed, Istar would lose the right to build a private beach club.
It's put elsewhere in the plan there that is referenced.
This section gives Istar the right to remove, to build the private beach club, and if it's removed, it will remove Istar the powers to do it. There is no change. This is existing language, and it is there because it's the entire paragraph.
When you say existing language, Michael, you're saying existing language in the 2002 waterfront agreement.
Yes.
Plan, the waterfront plan.
And the plan. Underline is new language, strike through is language being removed. Everything that is in regular blackface is the existing plan as it stands.
But I still don't understand, the beach clubs and the pool clubs are mentioned elsewhere in the plan.
Yes.
And this ordinance has nothing to do... And Istar's attorney confirmed that. This ordinance has nothing to do with the pool clubs.
Yes, but changing that language is changing the plan, and we're not changing that part of the plan.
But you are changing that part of the plan.
What you're proposing to remove that would remove Istar from being able to build a private beach club. This is just the sentence before it. We could start this whole section at a public beach club, will also be developed, or it can be started at the northern end of the boardwalk, will be extended. It doesn't matter, that is existing language that is not being proposed to be changed. And any change with that would be a substantial change, and would need to have to be...
Is that your opinion, Michael, or is it our attorney's opinion?
It is the attorney's opinion. They're both sitting here, we had a conference call on it yesterday.
Could I ask the attorney to explain it? Because I'm sorry, you're losing me.
It's exactly as the city manager mentioned. The plan is being amended to amend Section 3.2, which is entitled Office Space Recreation and Community Facilities. And as is true when you draft new language, the paragraph is repeated, but only that part of the paragraph that's changing is indicated for changes, as has been indicated with the underlining and the strikings. However, you wouldn't pick up the paragraph in the middle line, so as to cause confusion. So it's a question of taking the existing paragraph 3.2 in its entirety, which includes a reference to the beach club, and then restating it with the changes. So that's what will be the final result here, will not be any change in the provision about the beach club. And I'll go a step further and say that it would be a substantial change if we were to take that out, and it would require the consent of the developers to strike out the reference to the private beach club. Because we're saying here that the Section 3.2 is being changed as follows. We're making no change in existing language for the beach club, but if we struck out the beach club there, then the beach club's right would go away, and the developer would not have the right under the plan to construct the beach club. And we'd have a lawsuit against the city if we did that. You can't take that language out. So I introduced myself a few minutes ago. My name is Joseph Marazidi. I am the local mayor of Marazidi, Falcon. I am a special redevelopment consultant for the city and represent municipalities almost exclusively around the state of redevelopment. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
I still don't understand. We are... On Packet Page 14, it says, "Change existing language," and on Packet Page 15, there's "Insert new language." So why can't we just remove that, those sentences? I mean, we are modifying the plan, so...
We're modifying the plan with respect to the purpose of this amendment, which provides new design for the north end of the plan. And so what we did is take this paragraph, we take out the 1941 prior design report, and put in new language, new design of the north end of the plan. And we use that existing paragraph to make it, because it all flows.
But this ordinance has nothing to do with the pool club?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't.
So I don't understand why it needs to be...
Well, when the legislature changes, amends the law, this is common practice in practice, changes in legislation, this legislation, the legislature may change a couple of words in the section. And so instead of just putting words randomly, we repeat the whole section with new words. And that's what we're doing. We're repeating the new section, new words have to do with the description of the modern development, which is described in the rest of this paragraph. And that's the language that's changing, not the beach club. The beach club language, well, the language remains unchanged, and we could not change that. We can't change that because it's in the redevelopment plan, and then the city on the basis of the plan entered into a redevelopment agreement contract with the redevelopment that provided they could build. So if we attempted to change the plan, it would breach of that contract to take out the beach club.
Except we are changing the plan.
If we were to change it, but we have the consent of the developer in right to make this change. We must obtain it. In order to change the plan, the redeveloper must consent to the changes that they have done. They, I don't think, consent to the changes to build the beach club, that would be dramatic.
And if I could just also add to what Joe indicated, as he stated, it is common practice when you have legislation at the state level as well, that they will repeat the entire section of the existing language, and then they will show how that language is being modified, and it may only be modified in very limited respects, but it gives the reader context to show how the new language that's going in, you know, melds with the existing language, what's coming out, where it's coming out, so that you can visualize what the paragraph or section will look like once all of the strikeout and underlining is removed.
I hear all that. I get all that, but logically, it makes no sense to me because we all agree that this has nothing to do with the pool clubs, and that language should be elsewhere in the waterfront redevelopment plan and not in this ordinance.
Your second question, Michael's going to answer.
3.5 Parking in the Prime Renewable Area Parking Requirements found on Pages 50 and 51. The language that's being questioned is "off-site parking colon." New development projects may satisfy the parking requirements in Section 3.5. The key to this is the words "parking requirements" are capital, which makes it a very valuable term. Any activity that requires parking, and I want to rephrase that, development that needs to have parking to meet the plan can satisfy that by the definitions and the objections, objectives as the rest of the language is. If there is no parking requirements, this does not apply. So if there's something that needs parking, this will allow for the sharing of spaces. If it doesn't need parking, it doesn't need parking, and this doesn't apply.
And what does the word "new" have to do with?
New development. If it's something that's being built, new. You don't have old development, it's new development.
It didn't... It didn't used to be there, and it was added for some reason, and I was just trying to figure out why it was added.
I don't know. But it's new development.
Okay. Another question I have regarding the density of the buildings whose height is changing, so if the height is being reduced, and the number of units per building is not being reduced, then the density of the building is going to be greater. If the density is not increased and lowering the building also results in fewer units, the risk that the redeveloper has like, you know, X number of units left over that he's unable to build because he's done with his build-out and there's no more room, and he hasn't built 3,164 units, there's nothing in the waterfront redevelopment plan that calls for any kind of payback to the redeveloper because he can't build those other units?
No, there's no credit. So for example, the Vibe and Monroe, those are smaller than the... So, for example, the Vibe and Monroe, those are smaller than they could be. There is no credit of four versus eight stories or 100 units versus 50. If I-STAR built 50 and they're allowed 100, they do not get to put 50 somewhere else. There is no credit, there's no density bonus or credit anywhere in the plan.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. So that magic number of 3,164 is now something less?
No, that does not change.
So there is a credit?
No. If they build, if a site calls for 120 units, they build 50, they have to find 70 somewhere else that still fits within the plan.
And if they're all done and they still have 1,000 units and no place to build them, they have a credit?
No. They would owe us those units technically, and at that point, the attorneys would be involved because technically they'd be in default of the plan, and that would be 2032, I think it is, when the plan sunset.
Okay. So the credit is in our favor then?
For density congestion, yes.
On packet page 21, where they're discussing to add the features to the walls of the parking garage, I wanted to add after the -- where it says planter width, I wanted to add something but will not interfere with pedestrian walkways. It talks about three-dimensional additions to that wall, and I just want to make sure that it doesn't stick out into the sidewalk.
There's a couple things with that. It's on the phone call we had, as the attorneys will tell you, they thought that that was a substantial change and would recommend it here. Additionally, operationally, anything that goes within the public right of way would require council approval anyway. So if any developer plops a planter or a 3D thing in a sidewalk that blocks pedestrian access, we would tell them to move it or move it ourselves. So that's part of our public access plan that the DPD's approved. The two big things is, one, Joe will back this up, it's a substantial change, that would have to reintroduce the ordinance. And two, they would need council approval anyway if it's in the right way.
Okay.
Can I just clarify that? So just having been on the council for a couple years. Joe, you're saying that adding the sentence to, you know, ensure egress is a substantial change to the ordinance?
Yes, material change to the ordinance, which then would mean we wouldn't be able to adopt it tonight.
Those, but just to clarify again, those words would be a substantial change to this ordinance? Okay? That's all.
And I would also say the ones that are on the table now, based on the amendment that you voted for, in my opinion, are not material changes that would require that you re-advertise and have another public hearing. And the desire is to move forward tonight in order to make sure that there's every opportunity for that northern and north end to be available next summer. So there's a time constraint, it's pressing, so we're anxious not to have a further one.
My last question is a general question. How does this amendment or ordinance become memorialized as far as the redevelopers concerned? I know what the council is going to do, you're going to pass an ordinance and it'll get signed and stamped and put in the book, but will you reissue the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan with the changes, with a cover sheet that's signed by both I-STAR and the city? Or how did, what's the process after this gets approved?
That's one of the things that we've talked about as part of the global amendments. And this is something that has birthed myself as the director of planning. For many years, the plans that these changes would be would just be thrown into the back. And that's horrible for people who come in, like myself and Joe, there are so many different changes. Jennifer, you're sitting there going, what is this? Where does this go? And Keenan, who's been here for a while, just smirked because he's been through that already. From the city side, Michelle Alonso and myself have talked over the last couple months of how do we update all the plans, not just the waterfront one, to get that real live, living, breathing document, footnotes that says this was changed on this date, so there is a better history of it. For this plan, it's going to be part of the global amendments, which we probably will start again early next year, because it just, it literally needs, someone has to sit down and retype this in Word, because the Politan decision has to be included in it. It's, there's like three or four different documents that need to be put into it.
Well, the 2004 was amended in 2004, was amended in 2010, and they were all reissued with a cover page, and the cover page was signed by both parties, and I'm just.
And those changes, though, were never actually incorporated into the document's language in spots. So it's really everyone sitting in a room, and we're going to have to throw it up on a wall, all the different versions of it, to make sure that there's one clean version. And, you know, how many attorneys have been involved in this? Both sides, Jennifer and Joe, are new to this this year. It's a huge, huge undertaking, where Brian and I have also talked about it, that we figure it will take six to nine months just for this plan. If the city, we have like 12 other plans. They all need to be updated with that.
Yeah. Well, this ordinance in particular was, just seems like it didn't go very smoothly.
This one is, I would put.
More proofreading.
I would actually put this one at the third worst. The Springwood Avenue one is a mess. Michelle, well, before I even started, we didn't have a full version of Adobe, so we couldn't make PDF changes. So that's why everything was thrown in there, and we bought a license to make a change of PDF. And then this was bad, the Springwood Ave, the Central Business District had something like 16 amendments that were never incorporated properly. So it drives us crazy because we're always cross-referencing things. Do you agree?
I certainly agree with everything you said about the plan. You made a very good point about the signature of the redevelopment. And that will come after the plan is adopted, once the law's been set. Let's hold off on that resolution to sign the amended agreement, because following this, then the contract with the redeveloper will be amended, and that will provide commitment to build the new water, the way we described in the plan, and follow up on the provisions. So there's a separate document that follows this.
Thank you for all your work on this, council.
Thank you.
Maureen Nevin, D.L.A. Court. It is confusing, and I think one of the reasons that this is so confusing, can you hear me? I can't hear myself. It's because we've always been told that you cannot change the plan because you can't amend the plan. The city would end up in court getting sued by the developer. So this is massive change. Global, what was that title? Global?
The global plan amendments is everything, and then a year and a half ago was amended for lot by lot. The plan can be changed, it just needs to have a -- it just needs consent from both parties.
But we're never told that. We're always told that you can't change it, it's, you know, set in stone.
You need both parties to consent and then you change it, lot by lot. This, if we work together, we can make changes for the betterment of everything.
I mean, is this the time for the public to actually promote some of the concerns they have in an amendment that they would propose?
No, because this amendment, your discussion really should just be on the amendment at hand, not the larger scale, global process of what needs to be changed in the entire plan.
But it's the amendment at hand that is the example that my question is based on. The fact that it's an opened document.
Any questions about the ordinance are irrelevant, tying anything to.
John, could you use your mic?
Any questions, the questions tonight have to be relevant to the ordinance that we're discussing.
Right.
If you say and mention something else that's not like, you know, the end of the world, but we can't start talking about the global tonight, it's got to be specifically on this ordinance.
And these are all changes that I-STAR has asked for?
These are all changes that have been agreed to by I-STAR and the city. As far as an amendment, and is what Michael's saying, is like, you might have been told by other councils something, we can't change the plan, which is false because Pam will say it's been changed so many times. It can't be changed unilaterally. One side, be it us or be it I-STAR, cannot just change it, it has to be agreed upon by both sides.
I don't see why the public would object to that.
No, I agree. That's why we're doing it tonight.
I've heard it too, been told by every council that we would end up in court, which is another thing that I'd like to ask, because I understand that at one point, was it '05 or '10, we agreed with, it was I-STAR actually at that time, as well as today, that we would accept arbitration, and that was the end of any threat of lawsuits.
Okay, I'm going to, again, have to rein you back in and say, tonight, all we're discussing is the ordinance in front of us, not happen what happened in 2005, 2010, or the future. There's a council meeting next Wednesday night, you can come up to the microphone and make all those suggestions.
Well, the reason I'm mentioning it now is because the attorney mentioned lawsuits.
Okay.
The arbitration is a form of legislation.
Well, so you didn't mean to exclude arbitration. That's great. So we took on that too. So what is the timeframe that is repeatedly referred to? What is driving the urgency at the moment?
Of these amendments?
That you, yeah, that you pass this very quickly and you get on with it? What's the urgency?
Without these amendments, the boardwalk isn't rebuilt. In regards to some of the parking issues, especially the lot-by-lot amendment that was passed last year, the current plan requires that all parking be developed on-site, but for small development, that can't happen because there's no space. So this will allow for developers to actually share space so that projects can happen, permanent parking and structured space. It allows for public art and public murals, which I-STAR and the city both want. And this will also, which I can't get into, but there's going to be something coming up in the next two or three meetings, that you'll see is a big thing in the city, that paves the way for this with the shared parking. So this is.
Can you define, you're not consistent because you're not on mic, okay?
I'm usually loud.
Appreciate it.
And as much as, as much as, I'm sorry, Maureen.
The shared parking?
One second, Maureen. As much as I'm not letting Maureen talk about future events, Michael, I'm going to cut you off too, because we've got to stick to the ordinance.
Well, he said he wasn't going to go into it, but.
It's for shared parking. It's if you have one of the smaller lots, you're required to put parking on-site, and the project can't develop then. So by doing this amendment, it allows the lot-by-lot development to actually happen more, which is one of the things that the council had been pressing for years, that's let's make lot-by-lot happen, and this is part of that. A lot of the projects that we've talked to developers about can't happen because they don't have parking, but now that this will allow them to have parking, it can actually go forward.
It will allow the developer to go ahead without parking?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
You mean it will allow the developer to go forward without parking?
The parking will have to be on another site, like across the street.
But it'll still be required?
It's still going to be required, yes. We're not, in this city, we're not getting, like, letting go people of parking. You have to provide parking.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Kathleen Muma, 1501 Ocean. I just, can you help me understand better the revising of the development control maps, why we're reducing height in the different, on the different blocks? I just wondered why we, why the developer's accepting a reduction of height, or what the strata, why would that happen? Just want to understand it better.
The developer was requesting the height reduction to make a project work and be more uniform and actually just look better. Some of the heights were all off, and one of the, one of the issues, when you look at item four, you'll see the circle that says three slash six P. That really doesn't make any sense because where does it start? There was never any, like, okay, three feet starts and stops at one foot to 12 feet, and then you go up to six. There was never any of those standards set. So from a design and a development perspective, it's much better to have uniformity. There's no real line of demarcation that was ever done.
Okay, so it's basically they're just going through their plans and thinking, okay, this would work better if it's three stories instead of six?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor, 1106 Sunset Ave. I just have a follow-up to that question, and I have to clarify that I'm representing myself as a private citizen. If the maximum height is changed, I mean, if the maximum height remain the same, couldn't they still build to those stories? Like, why is the maximum height have to be reduced?
Because they asked for it. And why wouldn't we say yes and have a better development control? If they don't want to go eight and they say we can go six, and they say let's make the plan six, and they're giving it up.
But if it could go, I mean, if it was at eight and they came in with six, it wouldn't.
It wouldn't matter.
It's still the same thing.
But if someone wants to give up that development control, okay. Either they're giving it up for it, so, okay.
I mean, I just think like the control remains with the city if it's a maximum of eight and they come in with six.
Yeah, they could still go up two more stories.
But now you've limited the density.
At their request.
And it was at their request. Okay, cool. Thanks.
Thank you.
Move to close? Second. All in favor? Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-38 as amended?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2019-319, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park adopting a second amendment to the amended and reinstated redevelopment and land disposition agreement by and between the City of Asbury Park and Asbury Partners LLC. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn.
Did we cover everything?
Yes.
You got a motion, and you got a second.
Second. All in favor?